Oh, thank you.
You don't have to do nothing.
We've got to do the gotcha. We do one thing. Or.
What are you touching?
Gotcha itch. It says, got it.
Oh, okay.
Someone says you must do that or it won't record. So it is now May ninth by well, after five thirty and we can start our regular meeting. Um. Public comment.
And you go in the beginning and the end.
You can go now if you'd like. Yes.
Okay. I sit here or I can't?
No, you need to sit there. Sorry.
No problem. Um, it's about my standards. Doesn't matter.
That doesn't matter. It's up to you.
Um, well, I'll stay up until then.
Um, this is Ellen Adler for those of you who may not know.
Good, um.
Ellen, you're off camera.
Is that better?
That's better. Yes.
Okay, so I'm limited to five minutes. It's been from a public radio, so I can do a lot, five minutes. So why I came to the meeting is I would like to see the space upstairs used as an art gallery. I would like to see other shows. I have a very in-depth and consequential background in marketing art and presenting art and curating art. I had an advertising agency in New York City for the most prominent art dealers in the world, Paul Rosenberg Company. They brought the cost and went to existence. Bose Galleries Boston created the Hudson River School painting. They are the oldest art gallery in the United States. These people are all my clients, the people who formed the American way, the Sacks, Donald Sack was my client. And I curate and I continue to curate. I'm also working with the previous head of PBS, Bill Baker. He gave us island. I'm making artist residencies up in Canada. So credential wise and and I love working with people and I have tons of ideas. So from what I understand, this institution started life as a gallery of sorts. When I first moved to Detroit, I had a lot of things on the plate. But I met with someone who worked for Philip Morris and I said, there is not a city's not a city without a museum, but how do you segue to that? I can do fun reason. I can do a lot of things, but this would be a perfect vehicle to open that door. And I have a million ideas that I would have to batter around with you. Were you interested in this? I'm very, very responsible. I've followed through on my word. You could check me out. That's who I am. So I that's what I want to do. Um, is there a place for feedback? You want to ask me any questions?
Um, well, how about one thing? Do you have a proposal? Have you written anything up that we could review, look at?
I could do that easily, but it wouldn't be much more than the five sentences I'm going to give you here. And I'm not doing it as a combo. I'm doing it because I don't. If you want it, I'll be happy to do that. But it's so broad at this point in time. You have the art gallery. I remember when, um, what's her name was here first, the girl that lived in Albany. Who was doing all the programming, Stephanie, right? Okay, so I was like, I went up into that space and then I was able to take a look at some of the books there, some of the rare books which are quite amazing. So that space is beautiful and I don't think it, it doesn't have to be perfect. It has to be vital and this is a very vital institution. And I believe I can make it more vital. I think I could make it something it isn't now. And there is no other space to really appropriate in quite the same way. You have the traffic, you have the coast of the downtown, et cetera. So if you would like me to write that, the very same thing I said, like I could fill it out. But I can't really fill it out unless I know there's some sort of real interest here and I'd be happy to do that. It's no problem.
Okay, well, thank you for that very, very much.
I'm, I'm curious. So.
The question, Marie?
Yes, what type of work are you proposing? Are you proposing using the original art gallery or all of the upstairs?
Oh, I think you, you, you can't bite off more than you can chew. So I believe in giving things well. I would use the original space that we use for the meetings sometimes upstairs. That is designated, I think, as an art gallery, or it was.
Yes.
Tall ceiling, beautiful proportions. I wouldn't fill too much because I think it's, I don't believe you hit the ground running. You hit the ground putting things together properly and then you grow from there. That's my feeling.
Christian, I believe you have a question you may ask it to.
Thank you.
You are.
The quick, it sounds speaking personally, this is not speaking for, it sounds interesting. Uh, I look forward to seeing your proposal and I'm hoping that you would share that with, assuming through the director. And that you would include.
I just.
And that you would include your contact information.
Oh, yeah, I've known Evelyn for years. This is a catalog that I put out. I couldn't afford the ticket to the Winter antique show because this cost me in nineteen eighty-six twelve thousand dollars for one thousand copies, but instantaneously all fifty-seventh street wanted to be my client. I really couldn't do any more than I was doing. But um, I worked before this. I was working at Art News Magazine. Former editor of the New York Times, Milton Nastro. And I was pretty unstoppable. The first day I did for Bose Galleries, pretty much every CEO across America wanted me. They, they are a very, they brought corrode to America. I started a whole series of these went into textbooks, University of Indiana School during, but I educated people. You know, I, I really crossed a line between advertising and that was Henry Holt. Now, this is the most prominent art gallery that ever existed. If you know, story of the monument man, that was my client, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you.
Okay, good enough.
Thank you so much.
And, and would the proposal include the, what costs might be involved for the library?
That I would have to come up with at the time. I'm sure I could probably find, find funding. I have one exhibit I'm thinking of that I thought would be very wonderful to start with. If you want me to write about that, I can write about that. Yes.
I just have a, I'm just very curious. I would think that at least there would be a cost for insurance, right? That there would have to be insurance.
Well, it depends how you do it. Honestly, I mean, you have insurance on the building, so you have patrons that are coming here. I would maybe I'm wrong, but I can't imagine that people coming in or wouldn't be covered. Okay, I could.
But what about the artwork?
It's almost insured. And I think we can get more information when the proposal comes in. I think there's some very specific pieces that you're asking about and certainly something we have to explore further, but.
Yes.
I started to jump in, but.
Yeah, I.
Glad you did.
I can come up with the artwork that nobody would have to insure. Honestly, there's so many ways to spin it. I gave an exhibit. I had an exhibit up in Canada on tiny houses. It was incredibly well celebrated. There was, okay, we've finished.
Thank you for your, thank you for the information of.
So the last client presents something with the little more.
Please, and then.
Pieces.
Share it with our director and then we can take it from there.
You got it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, any other public comment?
I don't think I'm supposed to today or Thursday.
You, you may.
You may be. Yeah. All right, hearing none. Treasuries report.
Uh, in the, I, in the fire package for this month, there was a list of routine bills. We had, oh, I had met with Paul. We had pared it down considerably. And I don't know if you want to take a look at it, but we met in the fire committee meeting. And we're presenting to this to the board to for approval that in case of an emergency that these bills would be paid without a board meeting.
Do we need an emergency or would they just automatically be paid on a routine basis?
Was my intention to.
Perhaps in lieu of every timely meeting.
That's, that's the way I was thinking of it, not that.
So they wouldn't be, if we had, if they came in and we still had a board meeting.
They were, they're not going to be on the list anyways. They would always.
I, I know they're always going to be on the list, but I, I just wonder if that puts, Joy, does that put you, um, does it make more difficult for you? You don't know if there's going to be a meeting, a timely meeting? Or just automatically pay it?
Um.
That's all right.
I'm trying to understand the question. Can you repeat?
So I think the question is that are we, are we approving these routine bills to be paid no matter what, or are we only going to do it in case of an emergency? And that was it going to cause you an issue if we don't? If we say it's an emergency only situation? Is that going to cause you confusion?
Well, I don't know if you had to say emergency. I just think if you're not going to meet.
Right.
And these particular bills are due.
Like saying, for some reason, we decided not to have a December.
That's what I'd say in lieu of, you know, a meeting. You, you could pay these automatically. Um.
It's not more.
Particular interest in paying no money other, uh, you know.
Right.
Other than at the board meeting.
It'll be, I can work with it any way you would like.
Okay. With my intention to have them paid routinely and then review that in that board meeting.
Okay. As a mess, I mean.
There's does seem to be a difference of opinion as to what, as to what the.
I'm, I'm okay with. I just feel like they're going to be in. I guess my thought was the only reason we were coming up with this is because in case we were not meeting, there would be some bills that we could pay. So they're always going to, you know, for meeting, then they're always going to be on the list anyways.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't know whether.
And to me, it is, I just wanted to know what we were actually approving. Then that was something I don't remember in my, it could have been just over in my head and I want to make sure what works with joy. So do we not care? Do we want to make this a routine? Or if we're not having a timely meeting?
I prefer to do it routinely.
That's fine. I think so, yeah. Okay, so.
So these are, so we'll read.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
The motion that these bill, the, the list of vendors, um, the routine bills list will be paid routinely every month without prior board approval. They will be approved at the next meeting.
Post-approved.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm being. Prove the automatic approval of identified routine bills.
Automatic payment? Of changes?
Payment.
The automatic.
animate. The identified routine bills.
Yes, I identify. Of identified routine bills. The board approved the automatic payment of identified ru- routine bills henceforth.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, fancy.
But then we need something that says, um, subject to, well, then, well, are they subject to approval? Subject to review at the next board meeting.
Exactly.
Okay, so, so they will remain subject.
Well said.
So just a quick question for me.
Yeah.
I just, I can just keep them all on that list, right?
Yes, now we'll have to make sure this is the list that we all agree on to, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can, no changes on my side. I could just continue. These are the only ones I can pay. Um, and you don't have to approve it, but I will still include them in everything. I just want to reassure everybody that you'll all the cost, all the spending.
Yes.
And they'll still require the signature of the, of the treasurer.
Yes. And, and one other person. Yes, two people.
Well, these are online bills. They normally, yeah, some of them are online, so.
Okay, Jerry, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm just realizing I, I have a lot of holes in where I was. But anyway, it says TIAA craft for retirement. And what about the state retirement?
That's not here quite yet.
Join, we'll have to have another.
I just began, I missed chunks of time here.
Here again on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
All those not in favor? Marie.
Marie.
Please.
Okay.
Are you still saying nay, Marie?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that, you, you are still saying nay?
It's a nay.
That's correct. I am still saying nay.
Okay.
All right, and then the next is the list of bills for the month and the proposal that we approve the payment of the bills in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone not in favor? Epstein? That's it. Oh. And then Kate, well, for those who were not here, because we did talk about this at the last time, we did reinvest the money in the treasury bills. Um, we went with just a single amount rather than ladder them. Um, it's a four month coming due in the end of August. That's just.
And to ladder.
We did not ladder.
Yeah, so it's the idea like three of us in August.
Right.
About ladder.
Yes.
And, and why weren't, didn't we ladder? Yeah.
It was more of a call decision, so.
So hadn't we decided previously that we would ladder? I'm, I just.
We, 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 the, the way it was worded was with Paul's approval.
Mm-hmm.
And he, he felt more comfortable going with the highest rate for the four months. So the yield is five point one one. It is, and it, and it matures on eight twenty-nine.
I can. My day, we had eleven and twelve. But I'm dating myself slightly.
This is what we're left.
And it is.
And the age is a little one thirteen percent.
Five percent mortgages.
Yeah.
Eighteen percent.
Yeah. Nope, that wasn't from the fire.
Um.
Sorry.
On consent agenda, we have two items actually to this because there's no president's report, no upper Hudson report, no admin report. So it's the approval of the minutes and the building committee report, which A, okay, I may actually pull it. So I, I, I think I mentioned that to you. So we're going to pull that. So, um, for the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve well, the minutes of the April meeting. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? So it is.
I abstain.
Um. Building committee report. I'm going to do that now. Um, I did write and I mentioned this at the building committee that I, I noticed there were no changes. I did write you and let everyone else know that I had a couple additions or concerns about it. And for the record, would like to include go through someplace, um, about the reconstruction of the north courtyard, the, that paragraph.
Do you have a copy of the, part of the minutes? I'm sorry.
Of my, like, not of the whole thing, but I do have one of.
Scroll down, you know, like right after all the.
Just allow me to scroll down.
Sure.
Oh.
And you could check your email too.
I, I, I saw you. An apology. My memory is as good as yours. Still scrolling.
Yeah, it takes.
I think I'm here.
Just one more. That's the board meeting.
Oh, sorry. And there we go. Um, yes. It's not, I'm here.
Okay, um, so I had commented that the item under potential upcoming grant opportunities of reconstruction or courtyard, et cetera, um, that some of that implies a project that has not been decided by the board and adding it to the potential lists gives it more credence and appropriate. I might didn't say it as nicely.
It's just a list.
Right, what?
It's just a list. It doesn't mean it's an improved list. It's just a list of potential projects.
But I wanted to make the comment and thought for now to mitigate any uh, confusion in the future that that comment be recorded. Um, and then under long-term physical facilities, master planning goals.
Yeah.
Uh, no updates were brought forward and I just wanted to, again, I said, restate my previous comments that six months timetable was insufficient and a longer period had been broached.
Had been broached.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
Um, the only thing I will add to your comments.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Though revisit the long-term physical planning piece at our next meeting. Hope to clarify that piece there. Apologies to the
All right.
In clarity in that piece there. That's my fault. Uh, regarding the emergency stair, uh, I think you could ask any fire official will tell you that we are at very high risk of not being occupied buildings we currently do. Given the condition of our egress stairs that are currently in place. So I, I strongly would advocate for that piece to be included on the list of potential projects that we should consider.
We can certainly talk about.
Without consideration of long-term planning.
I'm, I'm confused. I thought the, what everyone had been objecting to was the inclusion of the courtyard project. Is that not the case? Did I misunderstand? And it was actually the the stairs?
No, you, you are correct actually in what you thought. I was not talking about the stairs, although that does very closely, but that seemed to be in addition. So I had not, I had not commented at the meeting about it, so I can't add it to the notes, the minutes, because I didn't say anything about it.
All right, but my question is, are any of these, this, any of these things on this list been approved by the board? I mean, none of them.
We've, we've talked about it all. I mean, we've, we've said, but I don't.
I mean, I don't see why that one stands out because I don't, I'm sure the emergency press was just brought up at the last meeting. That was the first time it's ever been on the list. We didn't approve that.
But, but I didn't make a comment on it. Maybe, hell, I'm going to do that at the end of the.
Okay. All right.
And also, I, well, first of all, usually the building committee ideas precede the board anyway, and don't go through board approval before um, being discussed in the building committee. It's sort of the reverse of what actually occurs. But we did approve the courtyard project in the sense that we approved the HSR that was done, which included that project.
We, we accepted the HSR and so we'll, we'll come forward to the long-term physical plant, master planning.
These were suggestions. We didn't say, yeah, we're going forward.
Ellen, we have, it sounded like you had read from something, the specific language of your objections.
I sent an email out, but I have that and if you need it, I'll consent it again.
Hi.
Or I can hand this to you too. When I'm.
And I also agree with Carolyn that it has more credence than many of the other projects that were on the list that hadn't been discussed before, like for instance, the repair of the Tiffany window.
Oh, we've talked about that a lot of times, the ten grand and additional money and whether or not that was going to be a good construction project or not.
No, that was the landlights we talked about in relation to that money.
And we've talked about Tiffany too, whether or not it can fall under the ten. At which Paul says, no, I mean, we, we've talked about it here and it isn't a major move on, um, projections. To me, there's a difference and I just wanted the notes to reflect the comments I made.
Sure.
That's all I wanted to do, Marie, was, um, reflect the comments made at that meeting. Because I know at some point it's, it's going to come back if I don't.
Future board will do what they want to do without regard to any comments made at the meeting.
But I always figure it's better to.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Um. So with that in mind, uh, we would not look at the building committee report for approval. So I will make a mo, do you want to make the motion? Or do you want me to do it?
As will you.
I'll make the motion to have the building committee report with those comments um, approved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Marie?
Yes.
I yea, abstain.
I had my hand up and.
I can't see it.
Moving near the background.
And I also said yea.
Yea, okay, thank you.
Okay.
But that's fine. Um, then we go to regular. The twenty twenty-four operating budget. I know you've got a lot to say.
I think it might be better to move that down a way towards the director's report.
Shall do.
Because it also involves some other issues that will be in the director's report.
Okay, shall do. Uh. So next long range plan, I had, you could send out the revised revised draft of the, uh, long range plan last week. I did not get any other responses back. Um. Chance now for anyone who does. And I know, Marie, you made the comment last month about the dig out to monitor it. Um, has, does anybody else have any other changes in, or specific constructive changes so I can add to the wording?
So I, I did have a question. You also sent out Kirsten's comments.
Yeah, the, the piece I sent out had Kirsten's, um, comments layered on it.
Okay, so I, I just, that seemed to be the case, but I wasn't sure.
Yes.
Whether they had been integrated.
That's why I tried to say the last time I sent it out.
But since you sent out that his comments as well, I wasn't sure. Yes, I, so for instance, I felt that monitoring the, the community uh, needs or input regarding what the library was doing and it should have a timeframe involved uh, rather than just saying that that should be done.
So, uh, under anger saying, instead of say, conduct periodic community, you want that that, that periodic to have an actual value to it?
Right, yeah.
yearly or annual.
Right, yeah, because so, so one could tell whether that intent was actually to be fulfilled.
I don't know that.
Okay. Anyone have any, I had no, does anyone have any objections or thought about that? I have no.
Every year?
What?
Every two years?
And just for to remind me, page.
First page, A.
Biannual, yeah, true.
Periodic, okay, so, all right.
The biannual?
Biannual.
Is that, is tw, every two years good for you, Marie?
Um, yeah, I was saying here every year or, or two years. Now, Paul, this seems to be a rather expansive undertaking. Are you okay with it?
Which is?
The, the long-term plan that's presented? It seemed primarily that it would fall upon you and the staff.
Um. Well, yeah, I mean, might as well add on more stuff.
This is very close.
Can't think of, um.
Worked good.
Any reason why? Any reason why not? Um.
Okay, um. I had one comment. Um. What?
It was in the.
I thought it was, but you know, I have part copy too. I think that's it. Tell me if I'm wrong or right. I can't. Oh, wait, never mind. That's the.
Administration would sit.
A one, okay.
Yeah. Make it biennial.
Biennial review?
Biennial. Because biannual was twice a year, and we're not doing that.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't even reaching. Twice, thank you. For a year.
But we want to do it once every two years.
Right. So the next one would be next year, right? Yes. And the other, just annual. Is it on here somewhere? No, is what? Is it on here somewhere or on the computer? I could not, no, oh, okay, and. There another copy? No, okay, that's right. Sorry, do it. Um. One thing that, you know, Paul and I had to talk about different definitions. Um, so in number outreach resources page. One, the fourth page. The addition of saying, um, ensure that the library has adequate public funding for operations and capital improvements. It's in the Dropbox, too, by the way. Yeah, under KL, it's low-range plans KL version. Um, sorry.
No, it's not. I should have pulled it out. On me.
No, it's not. It's really not. Um. And capital improvements and it in in B program grants for program support and capital improvements. Because it's if I put this budget related to, um, Paul and I had a discussion that maybe we we can add capital improvements, but keep it separate because capital improvements implies the larger projects, which are not always budget-driven, that unless you want to change the word capital improvements to maintenance because, you know, the internal things that need to be done here versus putting on a new roof.
Maintenance will come out of the operating budget, capital improvements, but not.
Uh, which paragraph are you talking about?
Page four, number eight.
Under outreach and resources. Can't wait down.
There we go.
Sorry, I missed this. What's the issue with this one?
Um, capital improvements imply things like a new roof. That's not budget-driven. That's separate budget-driven is maintenance.
So th- this is meant to be an instrument for whom? This is meant to describe who does what? Who, who's this instrument for? It's just for the board.
It's it's for the board to kind of look as a as a guide.
Be more sarcastic and say, we're, we're required to have.
Okay, it's for DLD.
Yeah. Isn't particularly useful? Maybe, maybe not, but we gotta have one.
So I was trying to understand if this is for the board or this is for Paul to do in his spare time. So, um, if this is for the board, then I think it has absolutely remained. I think I would have great concerns if we said, oh, we're not going to do capital improvements. That we're only going to do maintenance. I I would have concerns.
Well, I think that the question is public funding. Is that that public funding? Like, if you, I think you're saying is that the tax money is not.
Well, I think, yeah, for maybe.
Government grants included under that.
Right.
I think that includes public funding, so. I think there are various streams of funding. Not saying this is part of our operation budget.
Right.
Regular.
I think that's what Paul's concerned was that you're that it's being included with the operational budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's a distinction. I mean, you don't really you don't have capital improvements in your operating budget.
Okay, so so then maybe it doesn't belong in paragraph eight.
Right, I think that's what I'm saying.
Perhaps we should include it on the paragraph three A.
And maybe the right day.
Three A, I think, lots of that's an additional language in there.
Um, on your environment?
Yes.
Okay.
Environment three.
All right.
Include a safe, secure, comfortable environment for staff and patrons. Uh, provide maintain facilities that are clean and good repair. Um, I think we should include a paragraph in that says long-range capital facilities, master planning is part of that. Above and beyond just maintenance.
Long-range capital projects.
Capital facilities.
Facilities.
Master planning.
Yes. Um, okay.
Do anything we should do, you can be there.
Okay. Do you have anything to worry about ensuring that we have the money for it?
That's, then. I'm open to hearing the conversation about where would be appropriate. If eight is not appropriate for that, and where is an appropriate spot for it? I think we should have some of this, yes, fundraising or whatever to gather the funds necessary.
How about under environments? Right. Along with that, but maybe it's owned separate. Right, that says that ensure that the library has adequate funding for capital improvements. Something as simple as that. Under environment three, we'll do.
A or B.
Okay. Improvement this, or maybe it will be uh for future projects? Oh, there's future projects. So maybe it will be under, like a C. So we have planned for future projects to support library service goals, which is basically a long-range capital facilities master plan, right? That's this.
Yes.
And then funding. And then funding with under that. How does that sound? Kirsten?
It says recently, yes.
Okay, and again, I I wasn't trying to.
The, the list under B under three B
Really?
Is uh fairly specific in its, you know, identify our process that could prove access, usage, and enjoyment of facilities. And then list one, two, three, four, five. Those are very specific
Thanks.
Things now. Maybe, maybe.
I, I would.
Okay. They are too specific. This was trying to take the old, the new forward, and so you would take out what you're but the whole thing?
I would leave in B. I would leave in A under interesting we've got.
But but under.
I'm gonna show you.
Okay.
So we've got.
Here, okay, what? You can take this one, draw it on, I already drew in that one, so you keep yours. Draw it on your mind, please, and then I can revise.
I would work in man. Right. This. And he can, um. Oh, here we go. Let's just take this here. There. Slash. And then. Oh, yeah, I like, and then D fundraising.
Okay. And then we buy it. Thank you. You're right. Any other thoughts, suggestions, reactions? In person or virtual? Okay, um, I will revise the document, send it out again and get some reactions and maybe we can put it on next month's agenda. All right. So it is. Um, three, annual report.
Uh, yes, the annual work, the annual report is finished and filed and accepted and everything else. Um, some of the highlights are interesting, too, as we emerge from the um however many years pandemic was, um library visits uh are up about twelve and a half percent. Um, registered.
What is up? Library visits.
It's in the director's report. It's all written down. I'm just reading it off.
Oh, I get, yeah.
Um, registered borrowers are up four percent. Overall circulation is up over twenty seven percent, which is encouraging. Again, we kind of measure the use of the library by circulation. I mean, it's one of the sacred statistics that we use. Um, both reference questions and interlibrary loans have increased. Um, you'll notice that electronic uh holdings are down because um they did a significant amount of weeding of the book collection which is held in common with all twenty-nine number libraries.
So up or down to that reading?
Yeah, well, there's a committee.
Okay.
It's got librarians from other libraries and not me. And children's programming is attendance is up. Um, particularly, well, our story, our attendance is really often somewhat impressive uh for us. Um, generally, programs are up, but they have made such a mess of adult programming in the annual report that it's hard to tell anything about it. But we did according to our records, we did um less actual adult programs. So that may have um affected uh the attendance figures, but again, it's they sort of made a mess of it last year and the year before, and now it's difficult to sort out. But we are getting a lot of people um attracted to our programming in both children's, young adults, and adults. So.
Am I reading this right, Paul, that last year they only had thirty-five YPS programs and we had five hundred and six people attended? On the annual report?
On the annual report?
Yeah.
Oh, you're making me go between.
Sorry. Because it looks like we, I mean, we had significantly less programs, but significantly more attendance. In YPS.
Well, that's probably true.
I'm just wondering if there was a particular program that did so well or. Um. I don't know, you know, I was just just, it's more of a curiosity.
Yeah, we had quite long lists of programs with very, very few attendants in the past. You know, we do have larger attendance for whatever programs we put on.
Right.
And that's anecdotal evidence would suggest if, you know, that we do have an increase in participation all around.
Right.
I'm just saying it's a little bit difficult than the, at least in the adult card.
Right.
That with the annual reporting is the way they messed them up.
If I could just um help explain some of that, maybe, um, we didn't do any, and we we hadn't done any in-person programs really until like, I think, April or May. At least for young people, so, you know, we did a lot less programs because of that.
And we got more people.
We have like five, we had five hundred and sixteen people attend thirty-five programs. So there had to be a program that was like phenomenal. That was my only question. I was kind of more curious as to.
Oh, well, we had, I know, like, a couple of the animal programs. We had at least seventy people. I think we had more than that. So we had a couple of those.
Yeah, that that's basically was my question, Carol, more than anything else.
Today, we had the politicians downstairs and the snakes upstairs.
Yes.
Yeah. Or was it the same? Never mind. Be nice.
I think, and for a while, there was a drop. Um, what was it? The gaming? Gaming stuff, what is that, Wednesday nights or Thursday?
Uh, you mean that Dungeon Dragons?
Yeah.
Dungeon Dragon, I think, I understand is doing well.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I mean, you're really. Even better.
I think you'll see increases on that uh next year, too.
I was impressed that the adult summer reading program did so much better.
Hmm.
The adult summer reading program did so much better. It was impressive.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other, any questions, anything? Well, first, anything else you want to say about it?
No, other than um you know, um, statistic-wise, we're sort of climbing back to more normal operations.
We'll get there. Any uh questions, comments on this? Okay. So can I, is this inappropriate? Is there any way that we can actually see, like, circulation statistics rather than just annually? Could we talk about them like at the meeting or every, more than just.
We certainly could, yes.
And and have it broken down between Lancy Bergen.
The last time I tried to do that, the board didn't, had no interest at all.
It's on our long-range plan.
If you need to cover that every month, ah, yeah, I can do that.
Okay. I, I mean, does anybody else feel like that would be?
I think it'd be interesting.
Yeah, a a good thing for us to be looking at.
Look, look at it. We might not need to see it every month. It might be a quarterly thing.
Okay, it doesn't matter to me. I just feel like we should be looking at it more than annually.
I don't have a quarterly, but.
Then just show. Just show us every month that. Let's have a monthly, we go, we don't need to do this week. And that it may be better to do it more often than than less than the other way around. Uh, next thing on the agenda, the annual election. To keep things moving and going forward, we're going to at least set a date for it. Um, the discussion usually centers around, do you want to keep it in September? Do we want to keep it on a Tuesday? Um, Paul likes doing this the last Tuesday. We are very lucky.
It's when it should be. That's when everybody knows that it is.
Yeah, but if it's.
If you move it around, you're trying to fool people and you'll get criticism.
You'll get criticism anyways because, hey, I got in trouble for putting it on a Yenta the year before, so we always get into trouble. Um, the last Tuesday of September giving us the most time, which was people like, is uh the twenty-sixth of September, um, Yom Kippur ends Sunday sundown on Monday. But we've discussed that if people are still traveling back from wherever they were for Yom Kippur our um absentee ballots are available. Thanks. You don't want to ever make people feel they can't help.
Yeah, um.
So.
That was another question about absentee ballots. I have not heard any changes, you know, that they made them a little more liberal um during the pandemic. Um, I haven't heard that there's been any changes since. The travel is covered.
Okay. This.
Um, I'm going to be away. It says, you know, you're gonna be away. Well, yeah, you're gonna be away. You don't have to say exactly when you're gonna be back.
Where are you going? Watch me.
Excepted reasons for ask for absentee ballot.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna be here.
All right, yeah.
Travel and illness. Illness would also be another, right, or disability?
Yeah.
Those are, those are automatically covered for.
Yeah. Although we do have to be careful in this town about absentee ballots. You'll always say that, of course.
Um, yes, so the twenty-sixth. Okay, um, our usual MO is our board meeting would be September twelfth to have our budget review um at main on the twelfth at seven PM upstairs. I've not checked to make sure that they haven't already scheduled something. Um, and then on possibly that Thursday, just just for fun. possibly that Thursday, just just for fun, um, I should tell people that because there is a event for the end of the expedition, um, it is going to be held on September thirteenth, which is usually the upper Hudson meeting. They are looking at a couple of dates to move the upper Hudson meeting. One of them might be the fourteenth. I'm truly hoping it's not gonna be that day. Because that's usually when we have a, you know, the budget, et cetera, all the election stuff over at the Berg. So I'm hoping we can hold off at least on that, the Berg version, until I know better. Is that acceptable? Okay.
So tell me what it is.
Okay, so on the twelfth, if everyone's also agreed, what will we do after our B board meeting is segue upstairs for the community meeting about the election. You know, we get to cover.
After the board meeting?
That's usually at seven. We usually do it at seven PM, do it upstairs so the community can come out and ask questions. Usually we have League of Women Voters play, not DJ, um, master ceremonies, ask the questions. Moderator. So that would be the twelfth.
And that's also meet the candidates?
Yes. And that's here. That's here, right after we go just upstairs. Usually die in between. Um, but the fourteenth, when we usually would generally be and the reason I do want to go to the upper Hudson meeting, by the way, is because that's the date we would vote on our construction. And I would like to be able to, you know, be there and say hi. Especially forgetting it's.
I will be, I will not be here for the September meeting, I hate to say.
Oh, so maybe we need to start thinking about a.
Which would go back to September five, maybe?
I will be here from the first to the seventeenth. I'm sorry. You will not, you will. I will be. And Carolyn from the Thursday seventeenth.
Nineteen September.
I just mean, I won't be here from the seventh until sometime.
Don't be, you know, but I'm glad you told me now so I can, I told us that so we can figure this out till when.
I'm not exactly sure yet, but uh probably the twenty second.
The twenty second?
The twenty second.
Okay.
If we have the moment, the fifth might might make more sense simply because.
We'll doubt be done one instead. I'm I'm thinking about form too, so that's why I'm kind of good in the numbers. Very much appreciate being forward. But so at least we could resolve that September twenty sixth will be our election day. And then we can work around the rest of it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right.
And then, you know, I have in my, in my calendar that on June first, we're to be advertising that we're looking for board members. So that, that was a big thing that we talked about.
Which seats up this year?
It wasn't.
Which seats up this year?
How many seats are open?
There are two, two seats open. It's Jerry's and uh Brianna's.
I was just looking at last year's. Uh, on my calendar, we did the the uh presentations on the thirteenth and the fifteenth of September, and the library vote was on the twentieth.
Yes.
Uh, so there was there was just if.
Yes, uh, because there's such time in between.
So there was just that the the presentations uh occurred the week before the library vote.
We probably had to move it up because of the holidays.
It could be.
Or then I'd be back. Right, you'd be one. If we did it the week before.
Just the week before, and have our board meeting and that too. So that would.
That's right.
So that would be the nineteenth.
Or the twentieth and the twenty.
Or the twenties, twenties, okay.
But I just wanted, you know, I just didn't want it to be a shock to.
All right, so those are possibilities for dates. I think uh it might have been last year that the holidays.
There he was.
Yes, those Jewish holidays, I've heard. Comforts them sometimes. And they all come up like together. Um, okay, so at least we have this twenty sixth, no matter what is our election. Off from there. Director's report and all the other stuff.
Yes, before I cover the operating budget, I can do a little more in the um, the record's report. I want to say that there has been a marked increase in incidents in the library in the past six months or more. Um, I used to get an incident report once a week. Now I get one every day. Um, these reports vary in severity with some documenting a patron who was obviously drunk or is suspected of using drugs in the bathroom to others involving threats of violence to other patrons and staff to physical attacks on patrons and staff. We discuss security issues at our most recent in-service day on January twenty seventh this year and are currently making follow-up uh plans to uh have additional in-service events uh that will emphasize uh security issues. Our staff um has responded well to these incidents um, making uh efforts to diffuse the situation, protecting patrons and guiding them away from the incident, calling for assistance from back, from backup, and when necessary, calling the police. I am in the process of establishing a safety committee. Uh, the committee would be open to any and all interested staff members. Actually, we've probably got twenty people already. I believe this would uh give us a chance to discuss ideas and new approaches to the issue of safety in the library that allow us to implement changes quickly. This issue has impacted urban libraries to a greater extent than suburban or small-town libraries. At a recent Directors Association meeting, uh Andrea Nicole, Director of the Albany Public Library, placed workplace safety concerns and strategies on our agenda. Uh, most of the responses came from us and other urban libraries. Um, so it didn't seem to be a major issue in the suburbs or in in small-town libraries. So I wanted to bring your attention to what we are currently going through. There are ongoing questions and nobody really at this point has a magic, magic solution, including Albany. Um, although we're both working towards um increasing the um safety of our staff and other patrons. So basically, that being said, I can review what I've thought about in terms of the twenty twenty-four budget. So that's also part of our agenda. And this is early on. We don't really have all the answers yet on the budget because the further along we get, you know, the more we can see how we're doing this year. Uh, but some of the things that um I would recommend is um increasing salaries, uh staff salaries based on our annual salary schedule. Um, and that's about three percent um per employee. So the cost of that would be about twenty-eight thousand um added to the twenty twenty-four budget. I recommend at this point um also increasing the materials budget by fifteen percent in the twenty twenty-four budget, and that would add about fourteen thousand um to the materials budget. The utilities uh budget has been somewhat problematic. As I said before, I can't quite, I thought National Grid was a regulated service, but apparently there's no regulation in New York State. So based on the figures I'm seeing now, and this may change as well, it looks like we need to increase it again thirty-five percent for next year, which would add another eleven thousand five hundred fifty to the gas and electric bill. Even though we seem to put too small gas, natural gas than any other place in the world, but who knows why it's so expensive? Programs, as I discussed before, um primarily are uh supported by small grants and um also the friends. But I think that uh we probably should add a bit to the budget, um and I'm suggesting twenty-five percent uh to help us plan a little bit better. These changes would require an increase in the tax levy of about three point six two percent for twenty twenty-four. Now, we get to the security question. And it has been under discussion um by the staff, obviously, who is on the front lines. The um library, as you know, the main library is open sixty hours a week. Um, the review of our incident reports would indicate that a security guard would be needed for the full time that the library is open. Um, we cannot really predict you know, exactly when these kinds of things and incidents are gonna happen uh or when a security guard is actually needed. So um in order to do that, that would require hiring two uh security guards um full-time at thirty-five hours a week. The, our experience, we've had experience with security guards in the past, and it has been pretty dismal, actually. We had uh basically rental cops, um rental security guards. They are underpaid and not trained. What we are looking for is a much higher quality individuals to do this job. Uh, it involves uh state certification um as a security guard and lots of additional training on the job here. Um, so we would actually hire these security guards, and it is a civil service position. Um, so we would have to hire provisionally at this point.
Did we have a list or?
No, not now. They did give a test uh two years ago, but only one person applied and he was not suitable for anything. So let's see, we're looking at um somewhere, actually, an hourly rate, somewhere between, you know, our library assistant and library associate. So it looks like about twenty dollars an hour. Would be, I think, reasonable to to use and then of course um, you know, the benefits that we have. Two security guards with benefits, I estimate, would run um about eighty-three thousand dollars additional in the budget for twenty twenty-four. Um, that being the case, if you add up the other elements and this element, you're looking at an eight point nine five percent tax increase. Well, I'm not saying here I'm I'm making a presentation and it's something that we have discussed as a staff. I'm not saying that having security guards solves all your problems. Our staff has reacted very well to many of these situations and have been able to diffuse a number of these situations. And I worry that sometimes security guards won't be able to diffuse these situations and sometimes makes them worse. Well, that's just a concern of mine um going forward.
That that's the advantage of hiring our own, hire our own. We could train them to do as we would as opposed to hiring a rental.
Right.
Person that comes in and does whatever standard security is.
No, I think it gives you.
Plus if they're here all the time, then they get to know the people.
Yeah.
Protecting.
Yeah.
And the people who are, and the people who are coming out of.
I got two questions. One, how much do you figure you're going to spend per year beyond salary in terms of the administrative costs and training? Because there are some costs there administratively, so for registration and and the training and that. The other.
Yeah, there would be. I mean, they're kind of hidden costs, but.
Yeah, they're, they're not hidden. You can actually dig them out because security guards will leave.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that for our purposes, it doesn't.
Just the salary, salary and benefits.
Add to the tax levy, so.
But the other question I'm gonna ask, I can out loud, don't know the answer. Would University Heights be amenable in contracting to put us under their umbrella?
Do what now?
University Heights, which is Russell Sage using their security contracted over over here too.
I don't know. I haven't, you know, I I.
Since you've got a fairly good-sized force, well-established, well-supervised, bordering us on two sides. Why is it worth asking the question?
Why would they do that? I mean, we're, we're practically worth asking questions.
Because they, they might look at and say, okay, we can afford to do that.
Right, they would charge us. I mean.
Yeah, they would charge us. And it would, it would also, in that case, cut some of our administrative costs and in, in the mind space that someone in our organization has to, would not have to spend on the security guard piece. I'm not opposed to having our own security, but given we have there's a, a potential opportunity right here, we want to ask.
Yeah, I I I as I say, I don't, um, our experience in the past with borrowing security guards hasn't been good. Um, that's why I'm suggesting that you would probably have to hire the, you know, this particular case. Um, but I have no idea. I haven't talked to Sage at all um about their security situation. I know they got some good guards over there.
They do. They're very well structured. And that's, that's why we want to ask.
I didn't realize they would be at all interested in sharing that sort of.
We don't know what we asked.
They don't seem to be interested in other sharing events, so.
And if they say no, that provides further justification. Or if they say this is what it's gonna cost, you only look at it. Or if they say this is what it's gonna cost, you only look at it and say. That's too rich for our blood, that provides justification for where we're going.
And Karen just said quietly something else too, that we could find someone over there who might.
Maybe they have part-time people or something that.
Well, if you're, if you find somebody over there, it's probably gonna cost you about what this is gonna cost you.
Right, but they're saying that you're gonna have to look for somebody anyways. So you might have someone who's already gone through a certain amount of training and understanding of the people downtown.
Right.
Has the experience as well.
Yeah, it's. I'm not opposed to the notion of hi- hiring our own, but I, I do think. We want to ask the question across the street first.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm, I'm saying, I think this takes. A lot of thought because I'm not happy about spending eighty three thousand dollars here. On that, I like to spend eighty three thousand dollars on books and other staff, I mean. It's not something I really want to do.
Also, an eight, eight point nine percent increase after a sixteen percent increase, that's a, that's a big ask, I don't know whether.
Well, it's something to think about.
Right, yeah, definitely.
Yes.
Um, I ju- I want to make you aware, though, that this is a serious situation, we're in a serious situation. And. We're working on ways to improve that, we're, you know. I don't have all the ideas at this moment.
What's the relation?
There is a suggestion too that, uh, you know, a security guard. Here and a good security guard with uniforms is gonna be a deterrent, well, perhaps. Eighty three thou- thousand dollars is a lot to spend on that, but.
I think Marie has a question.
I was wondering what the relationship with the Troy Police is.
No, what?
Relationship with the Troy Police.
It's good, it's fine. I mean, um, you know, they show up pretty quickly when it's really bad.
Uh, that as a, as a possible partnering, Marie as a possible hiring.
It's, it's sometimes difficult, they sometimes have. Different points of view than we do, uh, we had a recent incident which I wanted them to follow up on. I'm not sure they did, um. But.
I, I noticed the CBS in downtown is, is gonna, security guard now.
Yeah, yeah.
They changed their whole layout, everything's crazy there.
Well, retail is just leaving cities like in droves, because of, you know, chocolate thing.
Uh, I just wondered whether they, they had any advice to offer us? If they had any advice.
Yeah, they said get cameras, we did that.
Yeah, cameras.
That was some recent advice, and we've used them quite extensively, actually, and, um. Matter of fact, the last couple of incidents, we, um, gave them all the footage that we had. So that's helpful.
The cameras are for after the fact, in case you're diffusing facts or events happening soon.
I, I, I think they would probably recommend a security guard too, but.
Um, any other questions, comments? Paul, do you have anything else?
Um, yeah, I, I had. Uh, regarding the estimates on the utilities, I had looked at. Um, our figures for this year compared to last year, and, uh, last year. We had about. Used about fifty percent of, of the money by, in the first four months. And if we were to do that in this year, um, our costs I would expect would be sixty thousand. Approximately sixty thou- over sixty thousand dollars for utilities, so the eleven thousand you have. Based on next year might not be adequate.
Well, I didn't really expect it to be a final decision here. Um, but I did compare the end of April with the end of April this year. And it looks like we're about thirty five percent ahead of what we were in April thirtieth last year.
Right, and I kind of did the same thing in my projection as to how much utilities would cost us would be about sixty thousand. Which is about twenty thousand more than. Than we budgeted.
Anyway, like I said, I don't think we got a final figure yet, but. Um, again, I gotta go to National Grid and see what the heck they're doing.
Now, in light of what we talked about in the finance committee and the IT costs, should we be looking at increasing those as well, because. We're so close to our annual amount already, or do you think that's a one off because of something that happened this year?
Oh, no. Maybe.
Just bring it up.
Yeah. It's a valid. Again, this is early on, we're just sort of, uh, beginning the process here of, uh, the twenty twenty four budget.
One of the things that the IT stuff does help bring people in the door. People who might not otherwise come down town even, or come to the library. Will come for access to some of the IT that they don't have at home now that people live with. More with smartphones or tablets.
Any other, um, comments, questions? Anything else you wanted to add?
This one is off the record.
We're being recorded, so it's exactly what the record.
I'm not sure. Wh- wh- what an art gallery is.
Did you?
Selling art?
Did you want me to stop the recording or pause it, or?
Pause it.
Okay, I'll pause it.
All right. Okay, um, old new business?
Yes. What would it take this year or in, or in next year's budget? To bring us into, back into the Chamber of Commerce?
To what?
Have us join the Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, few hundred bucks.
For, for what purpose?
I don't have the bill, what's the bill usually, Joy, do you remember?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I can look.
I don't either.
For, for what purpose, though?
The purpose would be, it, it provides some opportunities for training. It provides some opportunities for group purchasing on things like utilities, as well as it increases our visibility. And gets us closer to people who might be able to donate to us.
Well, we were members for about twenty years, and not much of that happened, um.
It, 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 it requires a, uh, active, right? Process to, to take advantage of those things, and it doesn't happen passively, so if there's not bandwidth to do active. Participation, there may not be much value to it.
Uh, plus, we've, we've examined, we did examine when we were members, their different plans, they had a health plan, they had. I don't know if they have a utility plan anymore.
They do have a utility plan.
But none of them. Were cheaper than what we were paying. Um, so there wasn't any real savings there.
But it would cost us about seven hundred.
As it may, we can certainly join again if we want to pay the. Bill. I guess we'd have to find out what currently it is.
I have sat with their salesperson last week.
You what?
I sat with Mike Nagle, their sales guy, last week, and we'd be just over seven hundred because it's based on your employee headcount. Full-time equivalents.
Well, we have a few more people there.
You want to do events and pay for that as well, so it's.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
It might save us, it might also, again, get us, you know, we talk about tapping into financial resources in the community. How do we get near to those people, organizations that have those resources?
Well, I think there's a lot of organizations that don't have membership fees that we can get close to. It's not the only option, I think.
It probably can't paint plan to the goals of what we were trying to do, that might help to inform. Who we want to get close to, and that could be a good strategy to do once we. Know what we're trying to fundraise for.
I just want to interject, the last, um, we joined. Was twenty nineteen and the cost was six hundred seventy eight dollars and ninety five cents.
Thank you, Joy.
You're welcome.
I mean, you've been growing up in two months.
You have anything else you can tell specifically, that would be that if you've talked to their salespeople? Okay. And see what we, you know, what other alternatives, if people say that there's other alternative organizations, if we figure out what those might be. And whether or not that's more of a benefit. So, in two months?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, next question. Some organizations will make a donation if you send them a letter, does each letter have to be voted on by the board? Or how would we approach that?
Or is that something that's being done by the friends now?
Yeah, isn't that what the friends are doing, the friends are writing the letters down? Not, not the letter.
And we saw an annual letter. Other particular organizations you're thinking of?
Yes.
Okay.
But are there campaigns you're going to ask for money for, or is it just for money for the general fund?
How do we want, how aren't we, what's it being targeted for now?
I don't think there's a plan right now.
Okay, yes.
Well, like Daniel Coe always went to the annual, I mean, to operational budget.
Right.
So, not that's how the friends exactly, but, but, yes, they want to do more up and service orientation and. Facility, but.
So refer that to the friends? Okay.
So is there a reason we can't do it for our own organization, or is it because we're not a five oh one C three?
It, I guess it would depend on.
We're publicly funded.
I think there's several answers to that, uh, one I think would depend on, um, what the donation was in for. Uh, then we have the MOU with the friends now, although there is a piece that say we are still. We can, the library itself can still accept donations, so we still have the right to collect donations. But we're trying to give them that kind of fundraising, um. Opportunity.
But then.
I, I thought that we had decided to shift the fundraising to the friends because there was a question about whether we. As the library could fundraise since we receive public funds.
Yeah, well. That little aspect was still under discussion, um, there seems to be some question about whether that is accurate or not. Um, but it was more, we just primarily, primarily too, which was, there's no question about. Is that we ask for a very large increase in our taxes, um, and that it was. I will use the word unseemly to ask for donations right after, but whether the controller does not. There are two variations on this theme of whether or not the controller has ever made a, an opinion on. Uh, whether or not we could collect donations or not, um, or ask for money like that. Some say yes and some say no, so, um, we left that out, but we, as a library, can still accept donations. But we haven't given the re- more of that responsibility to the friends, at least until December thirty first. Twenty twenty, we'll see how it works.
And other donations to the library itself, that's deductible.
As far as I, I've always known that they have been.
Yeah.
Yeah, the friends have their own five oh ones, C three.
Yeah, they're, they're all five, but even, well, I'm wondering about the library. Library, she's asking at the library, if someone gives a donation.
Yes, it's specifically mentioned in the tax code.
Yep.
As being. Yeah, whatever.
But, yeah, tax deductible.
Little changes, though, in the tax structure, we've noticed that, uh, you know. People are not as concerned about that as they used to be because it doesn't count as much. You have to donate one hell of a lot of money for it to pay on your taxes. So, anyway, that change came about a couple of years ago, and I think it's affected a lot of, um. Uh, nonprofits who, you know. Depend on donations.
Any other old new business, old business, new business? In person or virtual? Okay, and, um. We can go quickly through community feedback?
Um, I heard people have completed volunteer forms and haven't heard anything in response.
Okay. Um, I heard from that same person, so. But that's gonna be taken care of, I think, internally here. Um, anything else? Okay. Uh, public comments?
I'd like to add anything if I could.
Well, please.
Sure, so I want to thank Paul for presenting the safety concerns so thoroughly. Um, on behalf of the staff, um, I do have a few things specifically, our partnership with the police has really. Improved this year, we started at the beginning of the year with inviting them to our in-service. We know several of the officers by name in the community, um. Uh, Mental Health Response Unit and several others that we've come to know through interactions and outreach events as well. So, um, I think that they're more aware of what we experience and take our calls more seriously now. And have better follow-through as a result, though, um, I do think they are plagued as well by understaffing. And sometimes the response to calls such as the large incident where it was up, it, it was significantly delayed. Um, depends on how many calls the police are actually taking at that time. Um. As far as security, I'm gonna change the terminology from security to safety. Because I think it presents a different point of view. Um, I happen to personally agree with Paul that I'm not entirely sure if security guards are the answer. I would much more prefer to have more staff that are paid adequately, that can be trained properly. If you contract with outside sources, yes, even if they are properly trained for their, um, organization. They're not going to be dedicated to the library and invested the same way that the other employees are. They're not gonna know the ins and outs of not only the building, but pay trends. Uh, and staff and how the staff work, even if you train those people, uh, they switch out. And then somebody comes in tomorrow and you spent a whole month training somebody, and now they're not there anymore, and you have to start over again. Um, I also would prefer to see, um, investment in better security cameras. Including external views of exits and some of our deficits internally, like the Berry Street entrance. And, uh, near our restrooms, uh, again, I'm speaking in generalities. Uh, I don't necessarily speak for the entire staff, and of course, our safety committee will make, um, formal recommendations to Paul. But, uh, in internal conversations and checking in with everybody else. Having an effective team that is trained appropriately and everybody understands their roles. It contributes to a more effective response to any incident, whether. to any incident, whether it's a small response of somebody perhaps having their bag stolen or a phone stolen to the violent incursions that we've had in recent times. So we do need to address the concerns, but I don't know necessarily what that means, and I just wanted to add that portion for you to consider as well.
But I, could I just piggyback on what Virginia said? And I agree with her. The other point I think that she was making was the fact that so outs and outside security guard isn't going to know the policies that we have. And that's really important that they know what the rules are because they can't enforce them if they're if they're not aware of them.
And procedures, it's important that everybody's following the same procedures to not conflict and give combating approaches to a situation.
I think what you want to point out is that somebody hired as a security guard will be familiar with the culture of the library. The rules we can train you on, the culture is much more difficult.
Thank you.
And um, you know, when you advertise for a security guard, if you say a security guard, that's what the suggestion of safety is is always good. But if you're advertising for a security guard, I mean, you got to sort through the people with black belts and ex-marines and, you know, that sort of thing, which you don't want.
Right, we want peacekeepers.
Right. And that's the culture of the library, basically, which may be different than other places.
So Virginia, are you saying that you feel the same way, like you don't, not only just not hiring from an outside service, but hiring one that's actually an employee of the library? Do you feel the same way about that?
I feel like if it's decided that we need to have safety officers and we are going to appropriately fund that, and I I mean appropriately, you can't just hire a part-time person who's going to be here at random hours, at Paul's suggestion of two full-time people that are employees that we can invest in and get the return with longevity and training them, then I would, I would understand and be able to back that. But if it's not fully supported and we rely on external resources to provide those people, I don't think that's a good idea in any way.
Okay, thanks.
Were you saying that you'd prefer to see additional staff hired instead of safety officers?
This may be an unpopular opinion in general, but yes, I actually would prefer to have more adequate staffing levels in all departments that we have permanent employees that are trained and fully, you know, there there's, we can't pay attention to what's going on because we're so busy. So does that mean that you have a safety officer who's dedicated to making sure those things happen and it makes a difference? I honestly don't know the right answer. But my preference is always going to be adequately staffing departments that already exist.
Yeah, the primary concern of the security guard would be rigidity. Making sure they know what's going on all the time and looking for things that are unusual or things that look like possible problems developing. Well, that doesn't necessarily isn't a security guard. It can be an employee who has a double role. And who is aware of the environment all the time that they're on duty. As Virginia pointed out, if you're working on the desk, you're checking out books, you're waiting on people in the same way with reference, you're answering questions, you're busy with that sort of thing. I believe, and I have to, I haven't talked to Andrea at all, but I, but I believe that they have experimented with that particular idea. And again, it's not necessarily a security guard per se, it's a person who keeps their eye out and you know, to what's happening in the environment.
But if that is, if that person is also doing other things, then they're distracted from, they may be distracted from something that may be happening or brewing.
I think, I'm sorry, Jerry, but I think Paul is actually indicating, you know, at reference, they do two-hour desk shifts. You know, you could have a station that needs to monitor monitored and then staffed with regular staff, like cross-training. But again, it still has to be properly supported with adequate staffing levels and you know, again, I don't have the right answer and I think our safety committee will have a lot of great recommendations to put forward. And ultimately, it's not our decision to make. There are a lot of different point of views, including advocating towards a safety officer because somebody in a uniform can be a deterrent for typical behavior. People will be less comfortable with petty theft or arguing in the library if they, you know, that that in grown, that ingrained like resistance to authority or fear of authority is there. But they're still just a person. And that person isn't going to stop the drug overdose reaction in the lobby. They're not going to prevent somebody from coming in the side door and collapsing on the stairs. So the security officer is not a cure-all for all of the problems. Lack of visibility with cameras, insufficient staffing in all departments. You know, the building itself presents many obstacles. So I think, yeah, I just want to, I guess the point is to show different points of view that there's not just, okay, well, if we get security officers, all the problems are fixed.
And what is the timeline for the safety committee to meet?
Paul has to set that mini meeting. It was just suggested recently. And to gather interest, Paul's right, it's pretty much almost the entire staff is interested in serving on it in some way at this point. So I'm, I'm assuming Paul would set a meeting in the next week or two. And then obviously, the first meeting isn't going to be sufficient. You would have to filter out those suggestions.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, as far as like looking at the budget for next year.
Mm hmm. I understand. I'll defer to Paul to that.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, that's all I have to say today. I just wanted to make sure that you understood from the staff perspective that there's many different approaches to that. Ultimately, it being your decision. The security guard, even two full-time employees are not going to solve all of our problems.
Brianna?
Um, not to further complicate the conversation, but to add another possible perspective to consider. There is a growing movement in the social work profession to have social workers on staff at libraries and hard to navigate a lot of the situations that you're threatening here, but then also should be sort of like.
We, we did discuss that we've had some experience, we had social workers that are in service. It's just a different perspective. And we don't really want to become a social service agency.
Of course. But you are.
Well, yeah, we are, but not in the same sense. And you know, the social workers that we have had experience with, as I say, they have a really different, different perspective. Some of our incidents have been really serious. Immediate and serious.
But if you're talking about like.
I mean, they're not really prepared to deal with that level of, you know, activity.
Yeah, I can say.
I mean.
Can you hear me?
Been discussing anyway.
Yes. Who said, can you hear me?
I don't know who said that, but it was.
Oh, that was me. That was Lori. Sorry. I I did not think my microphone was working. And I just wanted to let you know that we did do a little bit of research on social workers in libraries, two of the local libraries have had social workers and they have since discontinued both of those programs. And I think a lot of that is the philosophy that Paul is talking about. The social worker tends to approach the patient holistically. Whereas our perspective is much more about approaching the library holistically. And so I think that those two divergent thought processes are not, they don't really work well in tandem and it tends to be much better for us to properly train our staff in de-escalation techniques and awareness to what's going on around them, not just to protect single patrons, but to protect all the patrons and all the staff that are present. And I think that's where that divergence comes in.
I was going to suggest having conflict resolution training for the staff. So as you said, how to de-escalate situations and
Yes.
diffuse.
And that is training we do. Yeah, it is. It's currently training that we do internally, but we would be happy to also find external mentors for such subjects.
Well, you might get the, you know, the the mediation program to come in and do that. Paul has been trained as a mediator a long time ago.
What's that?
I was talking about the mediation program. To come in and and do a training for you possibly, and they would probably do it without charge.
Yeah, there's, there's some opportunities available. There were, I'm going to look at some opportunities that a couple of us libraries can share perhaps. And so we're in the process.
Yeah, I think the other thing to to just point out is that our, our staff are well-trained. Internal training or not, we have a collective experience among us. Different certifications among us that bring all of that to the table. And we are ever-growing with our policies and procedures, so we take feedback from everybody as we go and we make adjustments when we need to. I don't find fault in staff training in any of the incidents and.
No, no.
Yeah. I, you know, obviously, we want to keep our skills sharp and we want to expand when we can as situations grow. But I think that's part of my objection to external people coming in with pseudo-authority is because they would disrupt that balance of training amongst the staff.
I agree. I agree. Well said.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um, any other comments, public comments? Okay. That case. We can pretty much reach the end. Either way. Our director of adult services coming in and I'm going to pass this around if people want to check out the June schedule. So this is just paperwork. I don't know if anyone else is going to the, or interested in going to the Upper Hudson Annual Celebration. We needed an invitation in paper. I don't know if everyone received one in the mail or not. So you're welcome. You haven't gotten one? No. She was. Say what?
When and where?
It's going to be at Red Hall. No, fourth day.
When is it?
That gives you the date time. Here, here's an invite.
I'm waiting for my reservation in the mail.
And Paul, you maybe it came in the, you probably got it in the, in the van delivery.
Yeah, right.
We're doing it. Who knows where it is?
It's hanging up near the mailboxes.
You want FIDS? Want to be careful with that. We needed it headed. Okay. So date and time of our next meeting, June thirteenth, five o'clock, finance, five thirty. I'll be in here. Good to know. Thank you for letting me know. And I take it no virtual. I got it. Just want to make sure. June thirteenth, five for finance, five thirty for regular. And then unless there's anything else hanging. All right, I'd like to call for an adjournment. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody. Now, for those who can, may.